November eleventh, City Council. Sorry to me.
Do you have any questions?
Okay.
I would like to try that.
Thank you. You're perfectly fine right there.
Yeah.
Is there a fire presentation tonight? Oh, super recently, I guess?
Yeah.
I think there'd be radios when you're in meeting like this. Probably go and drill them off. What are we doing? Yeah. Do they do vibrate? Do you, uh, like, do you get a signal or call on your radio? Shake the light channel? I've seen videos of, like, uh, counting nine-one-ones and folks are actually sleeping there. They're doing it on the saddle. On athletic sunset. There's like one that doesn't catch you.
Yeah. Sometimes they don't.
Probably not. There's a couple of big people there to go on call, so if you get sick or whatever, you know, without having to wait for some people to arrive then. My, uh, my dad over there. He used to be on the call all the time. Where was it, admission? Oh, yeah, the Northeast Service Center.
That's exciting. I, uh, I worked on that Northeast building during the election. Early voting, I was a election worker down there.
Building definitely has some mileage on it.
You guys stopped talking up earlier. We still had a minute left, so killing time here. All right. Well, I will go ahead and call the meeting to order. And if they wouldn't stand, join me in the panel.
Mayor.
Here.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Here.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Here.
Councilmember Hands.
Here.
Councilmember Calzone.
Here.
Councilmember Leahy.
Here.
Councilmember Ryder.
Here.
Councilmember Silvers.
Here.
Councilmember Yowrich.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, next item up on tonight's agenda is public items. And members of the public are encouraged to use this time to make comments about matters that do not appear on the agenda. Uh, comments about items on the regular agenda will be taken up to see each item as considered. Please note, individuals can make public comments that could be limited to five minutes. Uh, we did have a sign-up sheet outside. But, uh, just to preclude anybody that didn't sign up and coming forward to speak in the seat, but we do have the one person that is listed here is Jodeen Coleman. Would you like to come forward to the podium and give your name and address for the record?
Hi. I'm Jodeen. Uh, the address is sixty-six eighteen Maston. It's my mother's address. I'm a general counsel attorney. And I spoke here last week. And I'm coming back because Juliana was kind enough to let me know what Everji had said about the problem that was happening in the neighborhood. And they sort of took the opportunity to address the fact that it had to be the trees. And I really want to, um, say that this problem has been going on since the eighties. So I doubt very seriously it is the trees since it's been happening for so long. I have lived in three different places in Lenexa, Kansas, since the eighties. And I actually have a bedroom set up in my home for my parents because every time the weather gets any kind of iffy, they're there. And since it's been going on for so long and since there's three different places in Lenexa, I think there's something special about that area that keeps losing power. Sometimes it's only like six to eight homes and hers is one of them and it's the last one to get power. So I really want to ask the council to reach out to Everji again and let them know that it's possibly not the trees since it's been happening for so long. And I know my parents have taken care of the, I don't know if it is the easement behind their property, and spent lots of money thinning out those trees and making sure that that's not the issue. I have called both Shawnee, Marion, and Everji, and no one seems to take responsibility for that easement area. And I'm not even sure if it is an easement or if maybe it is my parents' property that's behind that house. And no one seems in the neighborhood to know exactly for sure who it belongs to. Um, I wrote some notes since I'm back again. I forgot to say a few things. And so I'm gonna look over real quick to make sure that I haven't missed anything. Nope, I think I got it all. I appreciate your, you're listening to me again and I really appreciate Juliana getting back to me, which she did. But if you could, please, whoever you're contacting, to ask them again to readdress this and maybe it's not the trees, maybe it's something else, just something because it's been happening for so long. Thank you very much for your time. I'll let you get to the saving people. Okay, anything?
If you come forward, let's go on. Okay, now, no one else has signed up here, but is there anyone else out there that would like to speak about something that is not on the agenda this evening? If, if so, we can forward. I see nobody rushing to the podium, so I will close out public items at this time. Okay. Consent agenda is our next item up on the agenda. And all items listed under this heading are considered being routine by the City Council. May be enacted by one motion, but we know several discussions of these items unless the council member's request, in which case that will be removed. Public consent agenda is considered separately. Were you have two items on the agenda this evening? Is there any council person wishing to have either of those items removed? I see no one wishing to have the items removed. Uh, I would entertain a motion. Okay, Mr. Silvers.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the council approved consent agenda items number one.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
Mr. Mayor, on the second half.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Calzone.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, next item up is, I have a couple of proclamations and I'd like to read the first one at this time. It says, whereas during National Native American Heritage Month, we recognize the invaluable contributions of native peoples who have helped shape our country and honor the hundreds of tribal nations that continue exercising their inherent sovereignty. And whereas, native communities have passed down rich cultures, knowledge, traditions, and ways of life. And whereas, the city of Marion recognizes that throughout history, native peoples, cultures, identities, and governments were not always seen as a part of this nation, but as a threat to it. And whereas, today, we acknowledge that their contributions have brought prosperity to all of us and their diverse cultures and communities continue to thrive and lead us forward. Whereas, this month, we celebrate Native American history and culture and remind you that with a commitment to our founding ideals, we can address the wrongs of our past and become a better nation and city. Now therefore, I, Bob Pegg, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of Marion, Kansas, do hereby proclaim November twenty-two, twenty-four as Native American Heritage Month. And I urge all American, excuse me, all Marion residents to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities, and to celebrate November twenty-ninth, twenty-two, as Native American Heritage Day, proclaimed on this eleventh day of November twenty-two, uh, big mayor. Let's, uh, give all, let's give a round of applause. We have numerous Native Americans right here in Marion. My second proclamation is, whereas our veterans and military personnel are brave and selfless individuals who, when duty calls, willingly put themselves in harm's way to defend lives and the liberty of others, and whereas, the contributions and sacrifices of those who served in the United States Armed Forces and their families have been vital in maintaining our freedoms and way of life. And whereas, their unwavering patriotism and enduring devotion to the ideals on which the United States is founded can never fail to inspire us. And whereas, tens of millions of Americans have served and hundreds of thousands of Americans have given their lives while serving in the United States Armed Forces during the past century. And whereas, the theme for Veterans' Day twenty-two, twenty-four is "A Legacy of Loyalty and Service" reflects the enduring commitment and dedication of our veterans to our nation. And whereas, all city of Marion residents should strive to celebrate, honor our military family by flying the American flag, thanking veterans for their service, and showing appreciation to veterans and military families. Now therefore, I, Bob Pegg, on the virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of Marion, Kansas, do hereby proclaim November eleventh, twenty-two, twenty-four as Veterans' Day, proclaimed on this eleventh day of November twenty-two, twenty-four, uh, big mayor. Let's, uh, give our veterans a round of applause. We have numerous, uh, veterans that are actually up on staff here in the city. We acknowledge those individuals as well, not only serving our country, but for continuing to serve our community. Okay, the next item up is a, confirm the appointment of Cole Stephens, is it Stephens or Stephens? Stephens, okay. It's a, shouldn't have been. To the Planning Commission to the term expiring December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven. And, um, I would entertain a motion for that.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry. Who said? Oh, yeah, go ahead. I was like, I thought I came from the...
No, um, I move that the council confirmed the reappointment of Cole Stephens, uh, to the Planning Commission where the term expires in December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cozmeier. We have a motion, we have a second? Okay.
I'm happy to second that.
Go ahead, let's roll. We have a motion, a second, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Calzone.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, next item up is confirm the reappointment of Cole Stephens and Joseph Cronawitter to the Board of Zoning Appeals for the terms expiring December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven. I would entertain a motion for that. Ms. Hands.
I'm happy to do that. I move that the council confirmed the reappointment of Cole Stephens and Joseph Cronawitter to the Board of Zoning Appeals for the terms expiring December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? This way. Go ahead, Ms. Chaveta.
Mr. Ryan, second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Calzone.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, it looks like the next item up this evening is confirm the reappointment of John Thelisker and Terry Stinker to the Board of Structural Appeal Appeals for the terms expiring December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven. And we'll entertain a motion for that. Ms. Chaveta.
Mr. Ryan, I'd like to move that the council confirmed the reappointment of John Thelisker and Terry Stinker to the Board of Structural Appeals for the terms expiring December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven.
Do you have a motion, or a second? Ms. Silvers.
I'll second that.
You've been, Madam Clerk, we have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Calzone.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye. And Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
If these, these people are in the audience, I would love to acknowledge them by having them standing, will applaud for them.
Please do. If I had called your name, and I know we have one more appointment in the second here, but, uh, that's a separate one, but, uh, please stand and be acknowledged by this time. I'm gonna screw you out there if I called your name. There's a reappointment.
Maybe not for planning permission.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Um, okay, well, confirm the reappointment of, well, here's one I know is Christopher Leach, Katie Larry, George Vessel, and David Zuckey, Suckley, uh, to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for the terms expiring December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-six. I'm entertaining a motion. Okay. Ms. Hands.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council confirm the reappointment of Christopher Leach, Katie Larry, George Vessel, and David Suckley to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for the terms expiring December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six.
Do we have a motion, or we have a second? Okay, Ms. Chaveta.
Mr. Ryan, second.
We have a motion, a second, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Calzone.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
I've mentioned your name, but that group, please stand. There you go. Okay. The next item up this evening is, uh, confirm the appointment of Doug Murphy to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for the term expiring, uh, December, December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. Um, now, Doug is a, a new person getting ready to put on the board and, um, somebody that's not been on currently, but I've met with him and he is here this evening. Um, and I just was really impressed in the fact that he was a, knows several languages, was a French and Spanish teacher in the Johnson School District. Uh, educating our students is tough enough, but to do it in the two different languages is really tough. But, uh, Mr. Murphy, if you'd like to come forward and just say a few words, I've entertained it this time before we vote on you, but, so the council has the opportunity to meet you as I did.
All right, well, good evening to all of you and thank you for all you do. Um, my family and I have resided in Marion now for twenty-five years and have benefited from all the great things that happened here, and so I'm just thrilled to have the opportunity to give something back. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, with that, I would entertain a motion. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Silvers.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the council confirm the appointment of Doug Murphy to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for the term expiring December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Go ahead. Go ahead. Mr. Mayor, I'll second that. Okay, thank you. Um, Madam Clerk, we have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Calzone.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And let's give a round of applause to, uh... Thank you, uh, thank you for volunteering for that. Okay. See, it looks like we're up on number eight, and, uh, which we guys don't have, but I have here in my presence. And, uh, we always like to recognize, uh, on special occasions, uh, and in this case, it, uh, was the saving of a life. And, uh, the person that was saved is, uh, wanted to recognize the crews and the veterans for coming, uh, for what they did, obviously. But, uh, I, I'll give you a little history on this, as, uh, was provided to me as to what had occurred. On September twentieth, crews from the Old Park Fire Department in Johnson County, Madak, responded to the home of Bob and Teresa Germaner, uh, for a reported cardiac arrest. Upon their arrival, they found Teresa unresponsive and without a pulse. The team immediately initiated resuscitation efforts, which included CPR and clearing and obstruction from her airway. Teresa regained a pulse and was quickly transported to the hospital. After Teresa's recovery, her husband, Bob, emailed Mayor Pegg to express his gratitude for the actions of the responding personnel. In Bob's email, he requested to kindly pass along our sincerity and heartfelt appreciation and gratitude to the team. They are truly amazing and outstanding. As mayor of the city of Marion, I take great pride in our fire EMS providers. Tonight's my privilege to welcome Bob and Teresa, uh, Germaner, uh, and provide then the opportunity to personally express their gratitude for the life-saving efforts of the fire EMS crews that responded to their residents. Um, and I'll let you, uh, say a few words and then I will call those individuals up.
It was, uh, pretty, uh, don't remember a lot. I do remember, uh, one of the gentlemen at the house trying to make light of the situation with me, watching Teresa on the floor, and that was trying to take my attention off of me, what was going on. But the team did a great job. Very thankful that they, you know, so quick in the response. I'm not sure at the time, but it seemed like instantaneous when I had, uh, nine-one-one on the call. So I really appreciate everything you did. You know, they keep apologizing for breaking a painting glass. That was very easy for me to do. So I really appreciate it.
Yeah, of course, I can't thank them enough. I don't remember anything. I remember sitting down to eat and waking up in the hospital. But if we didn't live in Marion and we've been like, I mean, look, we've thirty-seven years here, I wouldn't be alive today, I really believe, because they were there so quickly and saved my life. I mean, I was practically, I was gone. So I can't, you know, there's not enough words. And we appreciate you, man.
We appreciate your kind words and, and they, and we're glad you're still here.
Me too. I don't know about you, but I'm so nervous.
Well, I won't comment on that one. Please, please stay there, though, do not go back to your seats, because I'm gonna call forward, um, these following individuals, if you'd come forward at this time. Uh, from Old Park Fire Department, Fire Medic Brian Wells, firefighter Tyler Garrison, and firefighter Jacob Enman. And from Madak, we have Lieutenant Eddie Buckhouse, EMT Lindsay Levy, and Camp Captain Anthony Sullen. I think we're into a picture as well.
You guys can be in the center and if we can just kind of gather here in the middle of them, I think, uh...
Brian was the first. Brian was the one that pulled the steak.
Oh, wow. And no broken ribs?
He pulled out a chunk of the steak.
I knew the one that pulled out the steak.
The steak looked good. It looked better on the plate, but yeah.
I don't know, who was standing next to me? And he was trying to, you know, make light of the situation, and he said, "Well, the steak looked like me." I went.
Now, you, some of you are all on duty and you're all pretty lucky to lay you, but, uh, or stay up all night. Thanks for being here this evening. Thank you. Uh, all right, my next item is up. I always like to spend a little... Uh, all right, my next item is up. I always like to spend a little time talking about, uh, things that have gone on in the last two weeks, uh, for myself and for the City Council, um, just kind of talking about some of the other happenings going on in the city. Uh, I attended the Marion Citizen Police Academy Graduation Ceremony. It's a great program that I suggest that anyone who has not attended, uh, to do so. Several of our council have attended this class. Uh, it gives you a better understanding of what our police force does. Uh, it's a great program, Chief, we appreciate you and your officers, uh, thank you for offering it to the community. Uh, I was honored to welcome our Marion Park Elementary Teachers at our community center as they treked across our city on a scavenger hunt that was organized by our Economic Tourism Manager, Kevin Crane. Our teachers have one of the most difficult and important jobs in our country. Uh, they're educating our future leaders of tomorrow, and, uh, much respect to those for what they do. Uh, I attended the O P F D Retirement Breakfast, gave them updates, all of Marion's done. I and several councilmembers and numerous staff attended a committee meeting concerning the I thirty five, the John Mission Parkway Interchange. Also discussed was the I thirty five interchanges of sixty seven and Johnson Drive. Uh, this group identified major concerns around these interchanges, and the fact that we need to provide better bicycle and pedestrian options to cross I thirty five. Uh, I attended Johnson County Quanis Meeting, this time of year is our cert, as a service organization, as we reach out to out those who are in need. Uh, we will be ringing bells at the Subpolicement Association Army again this year. So as you walk by those kettles, please drop a little of the bucket, it all adds up and helps so many. I'll be out there at Sam's Club if you want to come by, I'm putting money in my channel. I will be there every day. Okay, I gave blood, the, uh, blood drive, most of it from Marion Christian Church. Usually we have a council member to donate as well. Uh, giving blood is one of the greatest gifts we can give to others, and it's a life-saving gift. I encourage all who are able to do so to do that. Uh, and they have cookies, and, uh, if you didn't know that as well, and help in terms of, uh, commercials, I go to use for them. I and another council member attended the Employee Wellness Lunch at, uh, the City Hall, our guest speaker was our very own co-responders, uh, who spoke to us about mental health and what options are available to assist us. Yeah, I and a council member attended the Rose Senior Living Ribbon Cutting that was hosted by the Northeast Chamber of Commerce. Uh, this center is located at fifty seven forty six Menke. Uh, they, they could take up to eight residents, great food, a great atmosphere, and a residential setting. Um, they're a great asset to our community, and if you know somebody that needs that kind of care, uh, I would encourage you to check them out. Several council members and staff attended a single trash recycle yard refuse holler, uh, work, uh, it's a work group, work committee. I call it a committee, but, uh, I should call it a work group. Uh, this service group is worked on a request for a proposal that will be sent out to all companies providing the service. My thanks go out to everyone serving on that work group, as it's difficult to, to think about all the things that go into something that literally affects our whole community for, and, uh, it's, could be very impactful. Uh, and thank you, Miss Guard, for heading that, what, that important workout. Uh, I and a council member met with Mr. Engel, developed my agenda. I and a council member attended, uh, the Tim Murphy Art Gallery New Exhibit Opening Night. Uh, go by and see the new art that's hanging down there if you haven't, uh, seen it, it's very good, and. Uh, I met with Doug Murphy, which, yeah, opportunity and pleasure to meet and still have him this evening. And I was honored to meet with the Marion employees today, uh, who are veterans. Uh, we showed them a little extra love, we gave them each a sweatshirt that had the Marion logo and veteran on it as well. So, uh, thanks to our HR manager, Stephanie Thompson, and for, uh, Ms. Guard for, uh, helping to assist in giving them the due recognition. And, um, so I think that's all I have for the report. I think we're ready to move on to actual council items. Okay, the first item up on the council is Consider a Congressional Service Agreement, Clark and Anderson, and I'm sorry, Miss Guard, just quoting.
Good evening. Uh, the project that's being requested tonight is the design work for phase two improvements at City Hall. Um, if you recall, phase one was the exterior improvements out front, um, aesthetic improvements, and also the, um, iron and shades over City Hall here. This will be phase two, um, interior improvements on the main level, primarily to support, um, an increased customer service. Uh, with municipal court being held here at this facility on Tuesdays and Thursdays, it can get kind of, um, quite loud in the lobby, while we're also trying to do, um, lots of other work, uh, at our customer service counters. And so kind of just reorganizing what that looks like, um, making a, a better waiting space for our municipal court folks, and also allowing other work to still continue during, um, that process as well. And, uh, like we mentioned, this is the second phase of the project, um, design occurring twenty twenty five with construction occurring in twenty twenty six. It is included in the capital improvement program and the budget that you all adopted this past year. I do have to answer any questions.
Any questions from Miss Guard? I see no questions, I would entertain a motion. Ms. Hands.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council authorize you to sign a contract with Clark and Anderson for the bid sign of the City Hall Interior Improvements Project.
Yeah, motion or have a second? Mr. Silvers? I'll second that. Madam Clerk, we have a motion, second.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmyer.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Cogdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Lahey.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Motion passes, seven zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, it looks like the next item up is Consider Approval of Purchase of Real Property Located at five thousand one Marion Drive. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to quote you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Next item is the, uh, Consider Approval of Property Purchase five thousand one Marion Drive. Uh, the subject property is at the southwest corner of Antioch and Marion Drive. Uh, the city earlier last, this year acquired two properties to the south, but on that triangle, just to give a little explanation of that piece of property. Uh, the western face of that, the front of the building, if you will, faces Marion Drive. The rear of it is actually a tiered, a, a little lower, and it's on Antioch. I believe there's pictures, if we go to the next picture, that is the front of this nineteen twenty building, uh, thirty four, approximately thirty four thousand square feet is the property. This is the rear side of Antioch. Uh, we had an appraisal done on this property, uh, for a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Uh, the asking price is two thirty five, we negotiated the two oh five, which is less than ten percent over appraisal. Uh, it does complete the city's ownership of those three properties in that triangle. We also own the adjacent property of Fifty Terrace, uh, as well as the former barber shop on the southeast corner of the lower, uh, lot there at Fifty Terrace and Marion Drive. Uh, the intersection, as you'll recall, there's a C I P project that we are investigating. It was part of a planning Sustainable Places grant that we did, we partnered with Overland Park and Unified Government to improve Marion Drive, Marion Lane, and Southwest Railway all the way downtown. So we are currently investigating the engineering of that intersection. Well, it is a program, a programmed C I P project. Uh, we recognize that we may not do it depending on how the engineering comes back to what it looks like. But, uh, I'm happy to answer any questions about that subject property.
Any questions from Mr. Engel? Okay, let's see, no questions from Mr. Engel. Um, I entertain a motion for resolution on this particular subject.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hands.
Happy to do that.
Okay.
I move that the council approve a resolution authorizing the purchase of real property located at five fifty oh one Marion Drive in an amount not to exceed two hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Mr. Scott.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion, second.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmyer.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Cogdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Lahey.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Motion passes, seven zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. It's like Mr. Engel's still here, so I guess you have the next item, too.
I am, thank you, Mayor. Uh, next item is Consider Approval of City Council Policy twelve point oh Community, Community Improvement District Policy. As the council will recall, uh, we had a work session on this topic many moons ago to discuss, uh, what components we would like to see in a CID policy. We do not have a CID policy, but we all, I think, are in agreement that at some point in time, we will potentially be confronted with the opportunity to prove one. Um, there is a pending, it has been there quite a while, there's a pending, uh, request for one at Marion Town Center with, uh, Bob Johnson, who owns that center, that we, uh, have, that he put in a long time ago, that we've just kind of slowly been negotiating with him. This policy is not built necessarily around that. We slow rolled this policy in hopes that we would get a little bit further down the road with him, or not. So we're going to go ahead and get this policy approved, or at least we're recommending that it get approved. I thought what I'd do is just quickly remind everybody what a CID is. CID is essentially a tax at the point of sale, so the council would enter in a rede, into a redevelopment agreement with a developer slash property owner that would create a geographic boundary, that would create a, a community improvement district. Unlike TIF, which is generally infrastructure-related in terms of what's eligible to be reimbursed, community improvement districts, CIDs, are pretty broad in their uses. So while in TIF, you can pay for pretty much no vertical construction other than a parking garage, all infrastructure in the ground, property acquisition, things like that. A CID is pretty broad, so it's pretty important that we have a CID policy, which is, again, why we're here tonight. So the way that would work is once you establish a CID within that district, we will have a redevelopment agreement that, that basically spells out what are the allowable expenses. Perhaps we can put caps on those if that is what the council would want to do. So we essentially say, this is what we're willing to pay for, this is how much we're willing to pay for. Uh, that would occur at the point of sale, so, uh, and the city holds all of those funds, and then they funnel back to the developer, but the city retains those funds and they have to be a certified expense. They can't just say, we did this, trust us. We actually have to vet that they actually did what they said they were going to do by the time we said that they needed to do it by, and then it would become reimbursable. Uh, we promote with all of our incentives what we call PEGO, which is we don't issue bonds for them. We could, but we, we generally prefer to do PEGO, which means we're not going to give you any reimbursement until that money is available. So just as a graphical representation, uh, you'd have your point of sale, you would pay your nine point four seven five percent sales tax on whatever items that you purchased, six point five percent of that goes to the state, one point four seven five goes to the county, one point five will go to the city. The additional increment, the CID, would go to a different account that would then be used to reimburse the developer for the things that they do. Uh, the, uh, maximum is two percent per the recommended policy, which we'll get into in a second. Uh, the increments would be, uh, from point one to point two five. Um, just so you can't get, make up weird numbers, they need to be whole numbers. So, but that is, uh, uh, that is essentially a graphical representation of the CID works. As a reminder of what we talked about in our work session, go to the next slide. We talked about what projects would we view more favorably. Uh, we talked a little bit about how many shawls did we want to put in there, and we felt like if we put too many shawls, as we call them, it might limit our ability to be flexible. So we, we discussed the things that we would view more favorably. These are actually pulled from the policy, uh, in no particular order, but the most important one, I think, we all agreed to is that it needs to meet the but-for threshold. As a reminder, the but-for threshold, threshold is that but for these incentives, whatever it is the developer wants to do, wouldn't happen. It wouldn't be economically feasible. So we would only be coming to the table with incentives if it, as a last resort, to make this thing happen, which we would then judge as being in the best interest of the city. Uh, it advances city sustainability initiatives, uh, we'd be redevelopment versus development. I think that's just an acknowledgement that redevelopment in built environment is expensive, it's hard, there's already things in the ground, you already have neighbors next door, so we would want to essentially refresh some of the things that we have in our community. Again, that doesn't mean that we can't do development, it just means what would we view more favorably? Gives developers, when they come to the city and want incentives, an idea of what's going to be the easier path. Uh, new business first, first maintenance, uh, we want some, we want new, we want a bigger piece of economic pie. I actually think Councilmember Cogdon brought that up, we don't want to pay for a new roof. Again, we could, should we choose to do so, but our preference would be we want a bigger slice of the economic pie in Marion as opposed to paying for asphalt and roof tiles. Uh, mixed use, uh, was another component we talked about, and when we have mixed use, affordable residential development, uh, we don't define what that is, but again, we don't define what a lot of the things in this policy are. Those would come down to the redevelopment agreement. A few other things, uh, that we would have locally sourced materials is one of the things we talked about. Uh, utilized contractors offering prevailing wage, again, these are things that we would view favorably. Compliance with our comp plan or other studies, we have a variety of studies, whether that's bike ped, comp plan, planning Sustainable Places, any of those things that come in, we would view more favorably if these projects were in accordance with them. And then a high degree of architectural design and interiors. So those are the things that we would view more favorably. There's a couple other, um, general considerations. Statutorily, the limit is twenty-two years, so we said it could be up to twenty-two years. We also made a statement that we would prefer that it be shorter, we would view them much more favorably if they would pay off quicker than that. Again, that would be our choice, we could give twenty-two years, we could give two years. That would be up to the council to decide where we want to, but we did not cap it beyond what statutory cap is, which would be a maximum of twenty-two years. Total incentives, we will be looking for, uh, the city's portion to be less than thirty percent, that's standard with our TIF policy. Uh, again, we could go higher, should the council choose to do so, but that would be our preference, that it be less than thirty. It would be our contribution, much less than thirty. Uh, prefer PEGO versus bonds. Civic involvement, that's a big thing that we started putting in our redevelopment agreements last several years. That is essentially a contribution to city events, whether that be, um, Marion Drive Live, Turkey Creek Festival. Uh, there's a couple things that we spell out in the redevelopment agreement, it's kind of broad in our policy, but it lets developers know what it is that we've, that we're looking for. We also ask them to contribute, we make them contribute, I should say more accurately, to the Northeast Johnson County Chamber. Uh, I believe Drake Development has sponsored the golf tournament the last several years, they're also a platinum member, uh, at, at the Chamber. Smith John Mission Education Foundation, uh, they, they make a donation every year to, uh, essentially help Marion kids that are, and their families that are in need, and that money goes through the Smith Foundation. We also require a donation to the foundation, Marion, Marion Community Center Foundation does a lot of great work for residents. Uh, specifically what they do, uh, that I think has the most impact, in my opinion, and I could add to this if need be, is that they pay for scholarships for kids to use our community. Right, so, so we've got, uh, a variety of kids that, uh, are able to access recreational opportunities because of our foundation. So when we send money to the foundation as part of this, uh, it's coming back to our residents. And then art, uh, whether that's art on site, which they would pay for, or we, we would potentially work out a deal with them where they would pay us for us to put art somewhere else, but we want them to be involved in, uh, providing art for our residents throughout the community. And then also clawback provisions. Uh, those are things that aren't specifically mentioned in there because they're going to vary from deal to deal. You might have, what you can, as you can imagine, a clawback provision, which is basically saying, if you don't do what you say you're going to do, we're not going to give you what we said we were going to give you. Uh, clawback provision for, say, a five million dollar deal, it's going to be different than a clawback provision for a twenty-five million dollar deal. But we do spell out in there that there will be clawback provisions. Developers know what those are, they know that, that's, that, that means we're, you're going to do what you say you're going to do. Um, I think that is the last point I have on all those. I talk fast, but we did talk about all of those things. Hopefully this is reflective of the conversation, I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
Mr. Silver.
Thank you. Uh, Chris, thank you for, uh, presenting that. Um, I know it's passed our work session, um, but I would like to make a recommendation that any developer who receives, um, permission to have a CID district, that they need to put on their entrance sign that lists all their merchants, that it is a CID, CID district, and the percentage, uh, that, the added tax percentage that will be added to whatever they purchase is. As someone who has shopped at CID, um, uh, developments, unaware of it for years, it, it was kind of a shock to me when I found out that I was, you know, I don't always analyze my receipt, my wife will kill me. Um, but, um, it, it was kind of a shock to me, and I think it would be good for people, you know, our residents and people who come shop here to know that they're paying an extra percentage.
And, and so I understand what your suggestion is, your suggestion is, is that it is on all of the signage that they have? Signage entering into any of, any of the centers or at, at this store, this.
The main entrance, like, over here, it has all the listings of the merchants, and then it says who the, um, the management company is, I think would be a good place also.
So like this is supported by a CID, that's, something like that. We certainly could add that to the policy if that's, um, that's.
I'd like to respond, that seems a little problematic because it could be here and there. It wouldn't necessarily be the whole, if you're going to put it on the outside signpost instead of at the. It wouldn't necessarily be the whole, if you're gonna put it on the outside signpost instead of at the, at the register. It seems like you're incorporating broader than it would, than it really would be encompassing or could potentially be.
We could require, at the point of sale, we could require that they display some sort of sticker. The city could create some sort of sticker that says your purchase.
Or even, well, of course, on the receipt, it's too late, still getting in trouble, wouldn't you? But on the receipt, I've seen that it's listed separately.
Yeah, that's where I've seen it.
Right.
I don't know that I've seen it in that particular fashion, but yeah, I've usually seen it. We certainly can try to figure something out if that's what the council.
Go ahead, Ms. Regal.
Just kind of going up. Could it be part of like each redevelopment agreement, not like part of the policy? Cause like if you have something that's like a, cause we agreed that we don't wanna do like a grocery, if there was a grocery store or personal care items, right? You know, we, it wouldn't be for the whole development or the whole area, like to your point, you know, Christine's point. So maybe it's grant a redevelopment agreement instead of like the policy itself, or just throwing that out there.
Well, then to that point, I think the policy can be that we are expecting transparency and communication to the customers in some appropriate fashion. And as we go into whatever.
Into the details of.
In the details, we'll work out in the development agreement that our, as, you know, this whole policy is simply a beginning of the negotiations.
Frankly, yeah.
And we frame it up that says, you're gonna need to tell people before they shop.
Or how are you willing to tell people? How are you willing to tell people that you're?
Right, in an appropriate way, we're gonna let everybody know that we're raking off another two percent.
We certainly.
Up to, or whatever number that is.
We certainly, probably would be easier to put in there, something about, be transparent about it with, you know, whether that's signage or stickers at point of sale or whatever, something, but we could craft something.
But the details would be in the redevelopment agreement.
Because, because it is a good point. There, you could have a district where you don't have all of the parcels in there. And so to have it at the entryway where you might have somebody in there that's excluded from it, that, that could be problematic. I mean, that actually is, I think, a good point.
Is it something that the will of council include, we would view it more favorably if the developer or property owner would provide communication to customers?
Oh, I think we can just require it. I think we can flat out.
Would that be a way to include it in here that we would view it more favorably and then we negotiate as part of the redevelopment?
Oh, you're saying like just additional point? Yeah, absolutely, yeah, I mean, that's, that's likely what we would do.
That way, it's in the policy, it's there for reference. Developers know it when they come asking for CID money, but we're not mandating it yet.
Yeah, I would give you, I know you're having a conversation with the council. I would, I would prefer it be done that way because then, then we would be able to craft it to whatever it is.
Yeah, that way it's, that way it's in our policy and we would view it more favorably. And then it doesn't get lost and if it happens, it doesn't happen for future council. We're not binding a future council anything, and it just gets admission each time.
Yeah, the discussion. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so I like that discussion about the clawback. Is that one reason why you like the PEGO more than the bond? Is it easier for that clawback to be, I guess?
Well, I think we just, if we can avoid issuing bonds and going out for debt, whether we're on the hook for it or not, I think it's better. If, that is, that does not mean that there can't be debt. So for example, at Drake Development Marion Grand Station, they went out and acquired debt. And we are, we are giving them money, essentially PEGO, to, for them to pay off debt or do whatever you want with it. We're, it's just not, we're not pledging those proceeds to pay off debt. They can do whatever they wanna do with that money. We have nothing to do with their, how they finance that, if that makes sense. That's why we, so the clawback is essentially just to make sure that they do what they say they're gonna do. So if we make a promise and we're gonna pledge something over the course of twenty-two years, well, and we say, you're gonna do A, B, C, or D. And we, they do A, and we turn the spigot on, and then they do B. And then they decide, eh, we're not gonna do C, D, or E, and we've already got the spigot on. We need to have some sort of clawback provision to say, no, you only did this much of it. So we're gonna, I'll give an example. We would say, okay, here's, here's an item. We will, we will reimburse you for twenty percent of the value of this item until you do item B. Once you do item B, we'll reimburse you forty percent. And once you do item C, we'll reimburse you sixty. So it forces them to continue to hit these benchmarks so they can access the dollars. Because really what that does, and this is way, way more information, but what that really forces is their bank is gonna see that and their bank's gonna now compel them to do those things because probably this money's going towards paying off construction loans. So their bank's gonna say, you need to do A, B, C, and D because you need to pay us back. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Answer your question. Yeah, if you don't, we certainly don't have to have clawbacks. It's a good idea to have them. It, it really just holds them, if you do what you say you're gonna do, don't even worry about that section. And that's, that is out of my mouth in negotiations. If you do what you say you're gonna do, it doesn't matter what he says. But if you don't do what you say you're gonna do, you're gonna have a problem.
So adding to clawback, it's not just do it, it's when you're gonna do it. So there are dates that are hard dates in there.
And those would be per redevelopment.
Right. And I have a couple of things. One, I think is just purely editorial. It's on page five, and it says, project completion is earlier in projected CID term. I would like earlier than what, so I just say early. And then, so that's purely an edit, a Chris hands edit, sorry. And then, but the one I really have a question about is also under finance. It's under financing on the top of page six. And I just don't understand, there are two exceptions to the general improvement and assessment law. I get number one, but I don't understand what number two is trying to tell me.
That's a Jeff White statement, let me read that.
Good, that's why maybe it didn't make sense. As you're studying on that in general, I think this is an amazing job putting together all of the, the thoughts that were going on in our work session. I just was delighted with it.
And I'm glad you said that because I wanted to thank the council for discussing the item I brought up. I know it was late and I think it was a good conversation. Thank you.
All right, are you familiar with the? Can you give me the subsection?
Okay, it's at the top of page six, which is under financing. And it says two exceptions to the general improvement and the, and the assessment law, and it's number one. And number two, especially when, what does amount of each annual special assessment may be reduced or eliminated? I just don't understand what they're talking about. And I will not, I will not vote against the policy just because that sentence is in there because the policy is really good.
Does it just say if the fund has not occurred enough, we're not gonna pay out, or even the fund is?
That, that could be what it says, but I don't want to answer that.
It says that in a different place, so.
I'm sure it has to do with the fact that it's a special assessment. So when there's a special assessment, special assessment's gonna run a little bit different than your, than your sales tax CID. And I believe what it is saying is that if there's a special assessment, we don't wanna double dip. That would be my guess what this says, is that we wanna be able to crank one of those things down if the other thing's cranked up. But this is a Jeff, this is a bond counsel and a financial advisor commission. So I, if I'd known in advance, I'd have had to answer.
I'm sorry.
So, I mean, there are generally two other mechanisms to function, or to fund the revenues that are referenced in there on the sales tax. You can have start bonds and you can pledge the city's portion, or I mean, the state's portion of the sales tax revenues. The city can also pledge a portion of its one percent as part of a tax increment financing to a project or, for projects within, using the tax increment financing law. You can use your own one percent. Or annually appropriated bonds, that could be anything from the general bond as well.
Well, I, I feel like they're, they're trying to cover something, but I'm not quite sure what it is. Anyway, could you, could, could we possibly, I don't know, whether we wanna add it back in later or what? If they, I would say if bond council put it in there, there's a reason for it to be there.
I would agree with that. It's, I miss this huge front. I mean, we could adopt it as is this evening, and then if we find out there's some reason we shouldn't, we could modify it at a later date, couldn't we?
Yeah, it is a policy, we can change policy.
I mean, I, I think what it's saying is that if you were funding the liability for what we, what you would otherwise be required to collect as part of the CID policy through other mechanisms, whether that's a pledge of sales tax revenues or annual appropriations, meaning just an outright cash outlay, then that would offset your, your responsibility on what you would normally be required to pay on the CID.
Okay, which is really a complexity that we're not anticipating.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I, I do, I have at least one deal that I can think of for another municipality where we do have fluidity between the tax increment financing, sales tax, and CID. So, I mean, you know, dollars can flow back and forth there.
No expenses somewhere else, okay.
Certainly can take a look and bring it back.
Well, I'm, I'm.
Cause I have a much easier edit. If we go to page five, there's number six. Includes construction of infrastructure beyond city would normally require, such as parks, transit stop roads, utility undergrounding, or charging stations. I just said the ore should be.
He's at the top of the page.
Gotcha, that's it.
That's it.
The utility undergrounding, so the ore charging stations, the ore should be.
I just think the ore should be removed. It's, these are such as. It's not one or the other, it's, we might want all of them. Or things that aren't even listed.
Absolutely, we can remove the ore.
Any other edits, Mr. Regal? We could go ahead, Ms. Regal.
Yeah, so on, in that section, see, under the development agreement, I have to talk about the page, sorry.
Page seven?
Page, yeah, page seven. In number eight, that's where you talk about, no, sorry, page eight. At number eight, where you talk about civic involvement and, you know, we want the developers to be a good member of society. I'd like to see something in there in addition to just like the nonprofit donations, just to make sure that the developer and the applicant are, you know, current on property tax and all, you know, other financial obligations to the city, county, state.
I think that's great. Does it need to be in civic involvement, or can we put that as an actual called out?
Somewhere else.
I think that's, considering what we went through with the previous developer. Counsel, I think everybody's head nodding on that. Absolutely, we can do that. That probably should already be in there.
Where are you at on that?
He just called it out under civic involvement, saying that paying your taxes should be part of the civic involvement. I think it should be bigger than that, it should be just a toll.
There's complexity in that. They actually have statutory and constitutional right to appeal their taxes. And when they do that, they're paying them under protest. Any development agreement that Joe writes or Kuta Rock or Jeff reviews will generally say that, that they have that right to, to do that. So we can't say, pay it under all circumstances.
Would, can we view that more favorably if you're?
So we could, we could get, we could get language from, I know Joe's got it. I've worked with Tyler Ellsworth. Language that addresses that issue that really urges at least payment or payment under protest of the monies in hand. It's not a situation where someone's delinquent, but they, they have a legal right to pursue appeals of their.
But payment under protest is still paid though, correct? I mean, it's just under protest.
Right.
And would legally, would that be different under protest than not current? I don't know exactly what the legal name of not current is, but I just haven't paid my taxes like in one of our past.
Yeah, I, I think the language that Joe and Kuta.
So there's language.
Will give, will give us, interest that.
And would it be, would it make sense to put it in this policy? Or simply would that be something that we should just include in RDAs?
I, every RDA I've seen it come through in recent history has language like that.
Right. That's what I'm asking. So should we, should we put?
I mean, it's, you would want, there's no harm in having it in both places. It's part of the redevelopment agreement, it's a contractual obligation on the developer. It's in policy, it's just policy.
Okay, so we'll get some language from Joe.
Yeah, you'd absolutely want it in the agreement.
We certainly can do that also.
Any other questions, Ms. Regal?
Yeah, I've got one more, actually. So you mentioned that earlier in your presentation, something about like the intent of the CID is that the proposed project couldn't happen without the CID. What if you're sort of thinking that, just like if this project wouldn't happen, but like if this project doesn't happen, is there another project that could happen without the CID? Like, is that something that we can take into consideration?
We are, if I think I understand the question, we are reacting to a petition or a submittal for a project. Is your question, if we would say, hey, yours won't work, go find something that would? Or we would be telling somebody, hey, you go do something different with your product, with your property, or you develop something. Have something that isn't so nice, have something that you can afford. I'm paraphrasing.
I mean, maybe, I'm not, I'm not entirely sure. You know, like, Kmart said, right, obviously nothing ever happens to it, or however long, fifteen years or something, but like.
The but-for, the but-for principle is generally a financial analysis that we would send to Jeff White at Columbia Capital. He would run the numbers on it, and he would say, yes, in general terms, the rate of return on this particular project is not going, it wouldn't be worth the investment because of the cost to make the improvements and then the ultimate return that they would make out of it. And so if we wanted it, we're gonna be, we're gonna have to give them some sort of incentive or some sort of help if we want what they're offering. We certainly could take that application and say, we don't care about that, we don't want, we don't want it. But the but-for principle is generally a financial analysis. It's, it's one that, that Jeff will do based on rates of return, you know, what, what an expected rent would be if it was fully stabilized, depending on whatever it is we're building. Again, it's hard, hard to make general terms because we don't know what the development is. But, but yeah, it's generally, we, we wanna be able to say, hey, we ran the numbers and this would not happen if we don't choose to help them. Do we see value enough in it to help them? And, and we certainly could say no, we have said no to incentive requests before.
Okay, so if we have, you know, a hot site that a bunch of people are interested in and the first person comes to us and says, give us a lot of money and we're pretty sure that we can get somebody to do something cool without that money.
Absolutely, or we just don't like it. And as soon as somebody asks us for money, we're, we're in the driver's seat, or at least pretty close to being in the driver's seat. Right, because if, if the but-for analysis is true, they're not gonna do it without our help. So we, and we certainly are not compelled to give anyone a dime of incentive. So we have to see value in it for the taxpayers and for the city's, the city's residents. So, and that's a financial thing, at least the but-for principles. We certainly could get to a point where we go, hey, it's, it passes the but-for principle, but we don't want that here. Like, there, there could be an argument, and I'm just gonna grab, there could be an argument that we don't wanna incentivize another car dealer, right? Hey, we have nothing done. That would be something that I think we've all maybe heard from some of our residents. There's a lot of benefit to having car dealerships, and we certainly are not saying no to them now. But there could be an argument where we would go, oh, this, this would. But there could be an argument where we would go, oh, this, this would happen, but since they want money from us, we're, we're not interested in that particular thing.
Okay, yeah, no, that makes a lot of sense.
We probably wouldn't word it that way, but that would probably be, that roundabout answers your question.
Yeah, no, that's it, I think. Thanks.
Any other questions, Mr. Irwin?
So, so here would be, here would be the question, um, if there are no other questions. So we need to, uh, get, um, we need to remove the or, we need to get some clarity on Jeff's, uh, insertion there, uh, for the two exemptions, we need to get some Joe language in there on property tax payment. Do you want me to just bring this back as opposed to approve it tonight, so you can see the language, you can have your questions answered?
And I also want earlier change to early.
Earlier change to early. And view more, view more favorably to notify the customers.
Right.
It sounds like we have enough that we might need to look at it again.
Yeah, we're not obligated to do anything this evening, so I don't want all those changes, I give our information, but we just.
But again, I want to say, I want to say, well done.
We'll bring it back. Thanks, sir. Okay, it looks like an insight about this considerable approval of the ordinance, uh, in the chapter eleven.
Any mayor council members?
Um, Johnson County Health Environment is charged with, um, the permitting, the review, the regulation of public and semi-public pools as well as our sanitary sewer system. A little bit about the public and semi-public pools, simply think of it as any pool that's not a residence pool. So, um, like a hotel pool, or, um, any kind of like neighborhood pools and things like that. Those are the things that we're talking about when it talks about semi or public pools. So, um, in nineteen ninety-five, we adopted the, the Johnson County environmental code, we did it again in two thousand and four, that's the current code we're under right now. Uh, Johnson County has just recently gone through a review and revisions to their code, they essentially split them out into two different things. To the Johnson County sanitary code and Johnson County aquatic health code. The aquatic health code is, again, back to the pool code, um, that is built, um, based on the twenty twenty-three model, model aquatic health code, the fourth edition. Um, again, um, these will go into effect January first of next year. And if the city wishes to maintain a relationship with Johnson County and have them be a regulatory agency for these, but we also need to adopt, uh, the ordinance allowing them to enforce that, those two, uh, guidelines. So with that, you happy to answer any questions?
Any questions, Mr. Irwin? Just over, just go ahead.
Just a confirmation, our new community center is compliant.
New community center, uh, we had discussions, I know, um, Director Slocum had discussions with him as well. So, just like any code that we, when you adopt the building code, something that was built under the previous building code, um, does not have earbuds. It can continue going forward. Um, so I just want that out to say, um, in the conversations with them, uh, the county, most of the changes in the pool code related to handling of, uh, chemicals and materials. And in my conversation with them, they were very, they had a lot of accolades for, um, the staff, pool staff, for, and the slop and the staff and what goes on down there. So, um, we have no concerns about, uh, the adopting the pool code, having me in fact, I won't go long down.
Good, thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead, Mr. Irwin.
Um, yeah, so it, it sounds like it's just an administrative breakup of sanitary and the aquatic in that code.
Correct.
And so there's not going to be, there's a, there's probably not going to be an increase in like the number of pools in Merriam that Johnson County Health is inspecting.
No, it will not, it will still be the, remain the, the same pool that they have.
Okay, thanks.
You can just go ahead.
If we did not approve this, would we be in the pool inspection business?
We'd have a problem, yes. Not only would we have a problem on the pool side, we have a problem on sanitary sewer side.
Well, the whole thing, yeah.
Not a problem, yes.
That's not something we want to deal with, so thank you.
Other questions, Mr. Irwin? Okay, I would entertain a motion.
I am wanting to move to waive the first reading. Unless I'm told otherwise by you, Mr. Mayor.
Gee, okay, I was just, yeah. Yes, I, I would entertain a second, I'm sorry.
No, I, I should make a real motion. I move that the council waive the first reading of the Johnson County sanitary code and the Johnson County aquatic health code.
Yes, okay, so that's for the waiting, getting the first reading, and go ahead, Ms. Irwin.
Ms. Irwin, you have a second?
Motion, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Cosmeyer.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver's.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaveta.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, so we have waited, I would entertain a motion to adopt it. Go ahead, Ms. Hands.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve an ordinance adopting the Johnson County sanitary code and the Johnson County aquatic health code effective January first, twenty twenty-five.
We have a motion, I have a second. Ms. Silver's.
I'll second that. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver's.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cosmeyer.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, next item up is, uh, for one of your, Ms. Olson, and go ahead, Ms. Olson.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Our C I P program includes a street and drainage improvements project in the northeast portion of Merriam. It was originally slated for construction in twenty twenty-six. However, after the C I P was completed, the county came back and advised us that they could award us stormwater improvement, uh, funds in the amount up to five hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars for stormwater improvements that we could construct in twenty twenty-five. Since we do have money allocated in the C I P, um, we're able to, uh, move this project up if the council desires. We need to use C I P contingency funds, but they are available for this. So we recommend going ahead and taking advantage of this external funding to fund our project. The, the project includes a two-inch melon overlay, a spot replacement of curb and gutter, uh, sidewalks and ADA ramps, and stormwater lining or replacement of pipe depending on if the pipe meets capacity. So the streets are hardy, Johnson Drive to sixty-first, sixty-first, Antioch to city limits, and then a number of the small streets just east of hardy to city limits, uh, fifty-ninth Terrace, Sixtieth Street, Sixtieth Terrace, and Sixty-first Street. In October, staff prepared a request for qualifications for design, and seven firms responded. Um, the selection team consisting of public works employees selected Olson based on their qualifications and experience. They submitted a scope of work and a design cost of two hundred and forty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars. And if approved tonight, uh, we would like to begin, uh, design right away and construction in twenty twenty-five. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for your company? Or go ahead, Ms. Shaveta.
Because this is word for, I have a lot of questions. So, as you stated, it goes to city limits, however, are we coordinating with Oberlin Park in any way on this project? Are they planning to do anything on the rest of that street? Will Merriam get blamed for passing things out, basically is my.
Well, we, we advise them that, their pavement's in pretty good condition, so, um, I don't anticipate them doing any work. You know that they're doing the playground right now.
Yeah, and then my other question is, um, so, construction, this is obviously extremely traveled during school, when school's in session. So I'm just kind of curious what that's going to look like, and if we're going to be able to coordinate with the school with Christfield, um, in terms of, you know, communication to families.
Because we didn't find out for the stormwater funds, um, it's very likely that we won't begin, we'll award the contract before then, but we won't begin construction until school's out, most likely. If not, we'll coordinate so that we can minimize as much as possible.
Just like, because I don't know if it'll be done before school starts, I guess, was kind of my point.
Yeah, um, we will, we will be very well aware of that and try to phase the work, so for example, sixty-first street is highly traveled, we'll get that one done first.
I know those are annoying questions, so thank you.
And they're important.
Any other questions for your company? I see no questions, I didn't attend a motion. Go ahead, Ms. Shaveta.
Um, Ms. Chair, I move that the council approve an agreement with Olson for design services for the twenty twenty-five street and drainage improvements project in the amount of two hundred and forty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
We have a motion, I have a second, just go ahead.
Uh, this mayor, I'd like to second.
Madam Clerk, a motion, a second.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver's.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cosmeyer.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye, and I want to say it's really nice to be able to say, let's move something forward instead of having to delay it.
That's true. Thank you.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, it looks like the next item up is the November C I P update. You're still standing there, so I assume you're going to give that to us.
Yes, the C I P update for November is in your package, um, so I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. The one that, um, I want to talk about quickly is our undergrounding utilities project, um, Evergy Selected Capital Electric. We have a pre-con meeting onsite on Wednesday. They've indicated they want to start November eighteenth, but they're still looking at whether materials are coming in, so I don't know all the details. Hopefully, I will know that by then, and I, I've heard that they want to start on Charlotte Mission Parkway. Um, there's going to be a lot of construction and lane drops, I don't know all the details yet. I've heard that this project may go on until July next year, but I'll find out more information at the pre-con meeting and, um, get back with you with that information.
Do we have a, do we have a price tag?
They haven't given me a price tag, but I will find that out. And as you probably remember, even if we have a price tag, then if it goes longer than our contract says that we need to pay them. But I'll find out what their bottom line contract is right now.
Any questions?
I have one question that the, um, um, yeah, the old basket repair project said it started the week of November fourth, didn't it? It, they were going to start, and with the weather, they haven't, but they're out there, and they've already, so they may have started at the very end of the week because they're out there, and they've put up their silt bins and started to clean out some of the tree, some of the trees in the crib.
No one's calling me in.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And we did notify the residents.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I see no questions for your, for your company.
Thank you.
Uh, looks like we have a single hall update. Ms. Clark.
Could you, if you could please walk the timeline?
Uh, it's the same timeline that we've shown you, um, we're well on schedule. We've had two of our three, um, single hall or work group sessions, uh, the second was last week. We're pretty final, um, with an R F P, which we'll be bringing over to for recommendation approval at the December ninth council meeting. We do have one more, uh, work group meeting, uh, set for this Thursday, just to finalize some of those details. Everyone on the committee, um, has worked really hard at coming up, not only, um, speaking for the residents and their neighbors, but also coming up with the recommendations for you all. So hopefully we'll have a final draft for you to review here soon. Uh, we'll give you a, a few weeks before the December ninth council meeting, just because it is a lot of information. And we want to make sure that you guys don't have any questions before the public hearing. With that, I can't answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Clark? I see no questions, like you, you and your committee, or your work group, excuse me. Okay, uh, informational items, we have the Department Recreation Advisory Board minutes, um, packed. I see my asking questions. Ms. Silver. I see none, go ahead, Madam. And, um, I don't think we have an executive session this evening, Mr. Irwin, but would you have anything from staff, Mr. Irwin?
I, I don't, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Irwin? No questions? Gosh, all right, oh, we didn't make it eight o'clock, but we didn't do too bad. Um, I would entertain a motion then. Say it.
I move we adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, for a second. Ms. Silver's.
I second that.
Yeah, we have a motion, say it, Madam Clerk.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Means adjourn.
Oh, that's right, we might talk about it. We, we, we do our best.
So, you're leaving on until the next meeting, I would like to.
Probably over there.